I've got to get on this conference call.
Oh geez.
My watch here, it is five o'clock, we're going to call the meeting to order.
Testing.
Sorry, did I, was that premature?
No, sorry, I was testing my microphone.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't know, I didn't know where it was coming from, no, mine says it's five o'clock right here. There's no one here that has filled out a card, we've called it to order, we have a roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Gomez.
Present.
For Kennedy.
Here.
Councilmember Negretti.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Cox.
Here.
And Mayor Garcia is absent from tonight's meeting.
Since we don't have anyone to speak, we don't have any cards, we decide on the agenda is for a closed session, Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you Mayor Pro Tim Cox, we have seven items tonight, although six of them are related pending litigation pursuant to government code 54956.9D1, that would be items A, B, D, E, F, and G, this is litigation between COMAV and the Airport Authority and City, the specific case names and case numbers are all set forth on the agenda. The other item, Item C, on behalf of the City Council, is real property negotiations pursuant to government code 54956.8, the real property location is set forth on the agenda as are the negotiating parties, and we will be negotiating price and terms of payment. To the extent there's reportable action, we will report it at the conclusion of the closed session or the commencement of the regular session at six o'clock.
In that case, are there questions from the council members? No questions or comments, at 5:02 in a few seconds, we will recess to closed session. Any questions?
No, sir.
Six o'clock, I call this meeting to order. I don't hate to interfere with your conversation ma'am, but we're calling this meeting to order, thank you.
Someone can't walk, so I'm going to go ahead and offer.
You will note the absence of our newly elected, oh, there she is, okay. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Gomez. Councilmember Kennedy.
Here.
Councilmember Negretti.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Cox.
Here.
Mayor Garcia is absent from tonight's meeting.
At five o'clock, we went into executive session at this point in time, the City Attorney will give a report on the executive session.
Thank you Mayor Pro Tim Cox, we had seven items on closed session this evening, three for the City Council and four for the Airport Authority, Items A, B, D, E, F, and G were all pending litigation pursuant to government code 54956.9D1, they are all somewhat related cases pertaining to the litigation between COMAV and the Airport Authority and the City, the specific case names and case numbers are set forth on the agendas. Item C is a City Council real property negotiation item pursuant to government code 54956.8, the property is set forth on the agenda as are the negotiating parties, at this time, there is no reportable action with respect to any of the closed session items.
Thank you Mr. Attorney for the attorney, are there any questions or comments from the council? Hearing none, at this time, we're going to have the invocation to be delivered by Reverend Patrick Travers from Holy Innocents Church, and if we will remain standing, the pledge of allegiance to be led by our Police Chief, Mr. John Schuler.
Ladies bow our heads in prayer. Heavenly Father, we are gathered here tonight to take part in our civil liberties guaranteed to us by the Constitution of the United States, which is to ascertain that our basic rights are held dear by our council, that they will strive to ensure that the rights of their constituents to be free of any law that would deprive us of equal protection of our lives, our liberties, and our property without due process, in foremost, any decision debated upon and then decided. We paled at our mayor, and each council member embraced the foresight of our founding fathers, and recognized the great fortune of living in a country that upholds our civil liberties through democracy, the democracy that gives us the right to elect those that would represent us. We also pray, dear Lord, that the challenge given to our mayor and council from their constituents is understood by them and practiced in their political and private lives, and that they be as good as their promises, amen.
Right hand over your heart.
By the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, a free republic, where it stands, one nation, undivisible.
With liberty and justice for all.
Reverend Travers, thank you from the council. Police Chief Schuler, thank you. We have no proclamations to present, and so we go directly to the City Clerk's presentation of the agenda.
Persons who wish to address the council on a specific item or any item that does not appear on the agenda are requested to complete one of the white speaker cards located in the council chambers lobby and give it to the City Clerk prior to the meeting. The mayor will call upon each individual who has submitted a speaker card. Pursuant to government code section 54954.3, state law prohibits the council from addressing any issue not previously included on the agenda, the council may receive testimony and set the matter to a subsequent meeting. Comments are to be limited to three minutes per speaker or less as deemed necessary by the mayor. Communications are to be addressed directly to the City Council, individual comments to staff or members of the audience are not permitted. Any individual or group who engages in disruptive conduct during the meeting will be removed from the chambers by order of the mayor. All documents to be considered for approval at this meeting are before the council, and there are no revisions to tonight's agenda, Mayor Pro Tim Cox.
Thank you. We will now move on, at this time would normally be appeal hearings, there are none, and so we go to B1 on your agenda, which is a public hearing. This is a public hearing to hear arguments for and against the notice of intent to adopt a notice of exemption for the Schmidt Park and Ballfield reclaimed water connections. Before I open the public hearing, are there any questions from the council members? Hearing none, I open the hearing on the notice of exemption for the Schmidt Park and Ballfield reclaimed water connections. Does anyone want to address the item, I do not have any cards on this item. Seeing no one approaching the podium, I will close the hearing. Madam Clerk, recommendation?
Recommendation is that the City Council adopt and approve the notice of exemption for the Schmidt Park and Ballfield reclaimed water connections project.
Move of approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Negretti, second by Mr. Kennedy, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed, motion carries with Mayor Garcia absent.
Item B2, this is a notice of intent to adopt a notice of exemption for the Luna Service Line replacement project, before I open the hearing. Any questions or comments from the council members? Any additional information from staff? Hearing none, I hereby open the public hearing on B2, I have no cards, I have no one addressing the podium, therefore close the public hearing. Recommendation, Madam Clerk?
The recommendation is that the City Council adopt and approve the notice of exemption for the Luna Service Line replacement project.
Second.
Go ahead.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Ms. Gomez, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed, motion carries with Mayor Garcia absent.
Agenda item B3 is also a public hearing, this is for the notice of intent to adopt a notice of exemption for the pipeline small diameter replacement Old Town Phase II. I do have, any questions from staff or any comments from the council before opening the hearing? I'm going to open the hearing, and I have one card from Jennifer Neri, is that correct, B3? Well, this, am I on the right one, I'm on B3, Madam Clerk? Want to give you every opportunity to speak, I just want to get you in the right spot. What item did you want to speak on?
Public comment.
Thank you. Okay, having no cards and no one requesting to speak, I close the public hearing. Recommendation, Madam Clerk?
Recommendation is that the City Council adopt and approve the notice of exemption for the pipeline small diameter replacement Old Town Phase II project.
Before I make, like everybody to know, this is a major project in Old Town to replace very old pipelines, water lines that. I'll move approval again.
Thank you.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Mr. Negretti, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed, motion carries with Mayor Garcia absent.
We next have on the agenda the consent items, are there any of the items that any member of the council would like to have pulled from the agenda for discussion? Consent is from C1 through C14. Any additional information or questions, if not, Chair is ready for a motion.
Move approval.
Motion by Mr. Negretti, second by Mr. Kennedy, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed, motion carries with Mayor Garcia absent.
D1, D1 on the agenda is the annual financial report, and the recommendation, I'm going to read the recommendation, that the City Council and Board of Directors receive and file the following, I think it's important for receive and file. One, City Victorville Comprehensive Annual Financial Report dated June 30, 2016. Two, Victorville Water District Financial Statements and Supplemental Information dated June 30, 2016. Three, SCLA Financial Statement and Supplemental Information dated June 30, 2016. Four, City Victorville Single Audit Report on Federal Awards dated June 30, 2016. Comments from the council or questions? Are we going to have a presentation? Ah, there's going to be a presentation.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tim, we do have a representative here from Davis Farr, Jeff, if you'll come on down, Jeff, I am sorry, your last name escapes me momentarily, so if you can tell the council, we do have a brief PowerPoint presentation just to go through the high points of the caffir, go ahead, Jeff.
Sure.
Thank you.
My name is Jeff Ball with Davis Farr, I want to thank you for the opportunity to present tonight, Mayor and City Council, let's see, we have the slide here. Okay. I wanted to start by going over some of the financial statement highlights, what I have here is a high-level summarized version of your balance sheet, and going through the sections, in fiscal year ended June 30, 2016, there was an increase in total assets of $9.5 million, a decrease in total liabilities of $1.6 million for a net increase of financial position of $11 million. This is a significant improvement over the prior year in your financial position, and is largely the result of activities which are on the following slide. What we have here is a comparison, again, high-level income statement, this represents the changes from 2016 to 2015, you can see total revenues having a substantial increase this year, whereas the total expenses have remained relatively flat. The next line is the net revenues over expenses for fiscal year 2016, this was $12.4 million. And then the next section we have here, we have, for informational purposes, provided some of the full accrual or non-cash items, that you can see the additional excess over revenue that would maybe be presented in your fund financial statements, that's what those are for. The next slide, going into a little bit further detail specifically on the general fund, this is again a summarized balance sheet, you can see that fund balance at the end of the year was $4.8 million, an increase from last year, largely the result of increased in receivables, mostly contributed to the city's subsequent receipt of the triple flip revenue in the summer of 2016. Again, a summarized version of your general fund's income statement, you can see revenues again are increasing mostly as a result of property and sales tax increases, as well as the triple flip money, which is a one-time receipt. Overall, the change in fund balance for fiscal year 2016 was an increase by $2 million to the general fund. Going into a little further detail on the general fund revenues, as I mentioned, you can see the taxes and assessments increased by $3.4 million, as well as the charges for services increased about $1 million, which is indicative of the economic growth in the area and continued financial improvement. And as I mentioned, your expenses stayed relatively flat, there were some offsetting fluctuations in your expenditures, but ultimately, expenses stayed relatively the same year over year, which demonstrates the city's fiscal restraint and prudence. What I wanted to do was go over the objectives of an audit, let me see, so it is management's responsibility, excuse me, management is responsible for the financial statements, whereas the auditor performs tests over the underlying records supporting those statements for the purpose of expressing an opinion as to whether or not those statements are materially misstated. For our audit, we were able to issue an unmodified or a clean opinion on your financial statements to represent that they are free from material misstatement. And additionally, there were some internal control recommendations which we have offered to management and discussed with the audit committee in a previous meeting. At this time, I just wanted to take a short moment to talk about some changes to your financial statements that will be occurring over the next couple of years, the first of which will affect your June 30, 2017 financial statements. This won't affect the face of your statements, but you will be required to disclose in the footnotes certain tax abatement agreements or arrangements that you may have with different organizations. The next one here is a bit more, it's a bit bigger of a pronouncement, this is where you will be recording your other post-employment benefits liability, this is a bit like what was implemented last year, GASP 68, which was when you brought on the pension liability, this will effectively be a similar implementation, but for your other post-employment benefits. I do want to say that I, that the city's accounting records were in better shape and more accurate this year, the audit went smoother this year than it has in previous years, and for that matter, I've been on this engagement for six years, and every year that I've been on it has been better than the last, so you guys continue to make efforts to make our job easy and to fairly represent your financial statements and maintain good, adequate financial records, which we greatly appreciate. At this time, that concludes my presentation, I don't know if you guys have any questions for me, but I'd like to open it up.
Jeff, I cannot pass up the opportunity to ask this question. Last.
You were going to ask the same question I was going to ask, I'm glad you are.
More appropriate coming from me. We read an article that Victorville is one of the most financially distressed cities in the state of California, I don't know if they said we were among the five worst or the 10 worst or the fifth, whatever it was.
Five hundred and eighth out of 511.
That Victorville is an extremely distressed city in extremely bad financial condition. Now, I just looked at the same numbers you did, looks like we have about $1.1 billion in assets and about $500 million in liabilities, and net position of about $600 million, does that strike you as a financially distressed city?
I should say it's not my place to comment on the financial health of the city, but rather to opine on the accuracy of the financial statements, but that being said, there are some clear indicators that the city is, financially is definitely improving.
And we know that 2015 was a, had some bad number of results because of recording the pension liability, to catch everything up all in one year, that was a requirement, but I think if you look at the improvement in our funds across the board, certainly at a high level, whoever concluded that we were financially distressed was not looking at our annual report to get submitted to the state controller, so I'm going to take issue with that ridiculous claim in the newspaper, that's all I can say.
Questions?
A couple times a year. A couple times a year, we get a very, very similar question, somebody somewhere with a computer and an Excel spreadsheet has, you know, grabbed publicly available information and applied his or her own opinion as to what all cities should or should not look like, and as we know, not all cities are created the same, they really need to be looked at independently, and these sort of things make for a flashy headline once or twice a year, but they are nearly worthless trying to compare every city in California or around the nation based on a common set of indicators.
Not going to try to explain their story one way or the other, but people who are doing these kinds of analysis continually believe that bonds and debt for the base and the redevelopment agency is somehow a debt and obligation of the city, and it's not, and for some reason, even when that's explained to them, they don't want to accept it, but that's legally where we're at, and when the state did away with redevelopment, they did away with a source of income, but they allowed a continual stream of income to pay the indebtedness that was created by redevelopment, still not a debt of the city, it's being paid, I have no idea why that story came out that way, but Erica, you say what you want to, whether it's truth or not, I guess, anyway, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, any staff comments? Apparently not.
No.
So this here is a receive and file, does it require an action, Madam Clerk?
I do not believe that this requires a formal action.
Let it be noted that this was submitted to the council, received and filed. Onto item number two, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, the subject is an amendment to, number two, to the General Services Provider Standard Agreement for Lennell, automated access control systems maintenance and repair services, project number ES16-060. Recommendation, Madam Clerk?
Recommendation is that the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority Board of Directors approve amendment number two to the General Service Provider Agreement between Olivier Corporation and the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, increasing the compensation by $13,100 for a new not-to-exceed amount of $38,100.
Questions, we have a motion?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Mr. Negretti, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed, motion carries with Mayor Garcia absent.
Item D3, this is a development rights swap agreement buying between Sterling Capital Investments LLC and the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, recommendation, Madam Clerk?
Recommendation is that the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority Board of Directors approve development rights swap agreement buying between Sterling Capital Investment LLC and the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority.
No questions or comments? Motion?
Move of approval.
Motion by Mr. Negretti, second by Ms. Gomez, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
None opposed, motion carries with Mayor Garcia absent.
D4, this presentation to approve awards to purchase eight vehicles under project number CC17-050, any question or comments from the council?
Just one, Doug, are you sure? Eight vehicles and every single one of them was under budget, some just slightly, all of them under budget, don't step on that beautiful dog. And we're buying them all locally, we did not use the national bidding entity that we used.
When we have local dealers that can bid, we like to send them out to bid, it's, we use the other contracts when they're not available locally, so it does save us time and money when we use the other type of cooperative agreement, it saves us a lot of time and effort and even some money, but if local vendors can provide, then we try and put a bid out locally and invite all the local vendors to submit a bid.
Did the bidders know what our estimated cost was, I mean, did they all purposely get under that number, or was this brilliant work on your part?
I would say staff's part, but, you know, they do a pretty good job of estimating it.
Other questions? Need a motion? Second.
Motion by Ms. Gomez, second by Mr. Kennedy, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed, motion carries with Mayor Garcia absent.
D5, presentation of request to approve the award for the removal and replacement of the engine in the 2003 X-Tec mobile screen in the amount of $33,198.70, questions? No questions, Madam Clerk?
Recommendation is that the City Council Recommendation is that the city council approve the award to RDO Equipment Company for the removal and replacement of the engine in the 2003 X-Tec mobile screen in the amount of $33,198.70 as budgeted for in the fiscal year 2016-2017 capital improvement project budget.
Move approval.
Motion by Mr. Negretti, second by Mr. Kennedy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed. Motion carries with Mayor Garcia absent.
D six. Award of contract to Christianson Brothers General Engineering, Inc. for Joshua Street and South Culver Road 8-inch sewer project, BM 17-082. Big project. Any questions from council? Any additions from staff? Madam Clerk, recommendation?
Recommendation is that the city council award a contract to Christianson Brothers General Engineering, Inc. in the amount of $129,342 for the Joshua Street and South Culver Road 8-inch sewer project. Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Ms. Gomez. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed. Motion carries with Mayor Garcia absent.
D seven. Sale of property buying between the successor agency to the redevelopment, to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency and Marinita Development Company pursuant to the approved long-range property management plan. Any questions from council?
This is just the final conclusion of a longstanding...
Right, Keith? Yeah, that's generally correct. There was an agreement entered into when the redevelopment agency still existed, and it was an agreement to develop this site envisioned as a residual to a larger piece of property that was required to accommodate the interchange project at La Mesa and Esquali. So with that, we've worked with the developer. We've maintained the relationship with the developer over the years. And over the course of many appraisals, finally came to an understanding of value amongst the appraisers to bring this item before you today. This item, you're being asked to approve it as a successor agency. It's not the final approval to effectuate the sale of the property. This still would have to go to the oversight board, to the redevelopment agency, but it'll be going to the oversight board with this board, the successor agency board's approval.
Funds will flow to the successor agency and then to the state?
The flow of funds would then go to the successor agency. They would be used first to pay any remaining enforceable obligations of the formal RDA, and then the money then gets distributed to affected taxing entities, not to the state.
Located on the northeast quadrant of the interchange at I-15 in Esquali. Other comments or questions? Madam Clerk?
Recommendation is that the successor agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency Board of Directors adopt resolution number RSA 17-002, approving the sale of property more particularly described as APN numbers 3092-311-09 and 3092-311-10 to Marinita Development Company, and authorize the Director of Economic Development to execute any and all transactional details to effectuate this sale.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Ms. Gomez. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed. Motion carries with Mayor Garcia absent.
Item D eight. This is amendment number one, two, and three, to consult professional services agreement with Merrill Johnson Companies in the amount of $63,188. Comments or questions from council or any comments from staff? By the way, for the general public, if there was any cards, we would stop and allow those individuals to speak, but I have no cards on any of these items. This is why we're going through those. Recommendation, Madam Clerk?
Recommendation is that the Victorville Water District Board of Directors approve amendment numbers one, two, and three in the amount of $63,188.10 to the consultant professional services agreement with Merrill Johnson Companies for a total amount not to exceed $352,558.10.
Need a motion in a second.
Motion?
Motion?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Gomez, second by Mr. Kennedy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed. Motion carries with Mayor Garcia absent.
D nine. This is subject is sewer and recycling water rate and capacity fee study, amendment number one. Questions? Comments from staff? Anyone? No cards? Madam Clerk?
Recommendation is that the city council approve amendment number one in the amount of $23,290 to the consultant professional services provider agreement with MBS for the sewer and recycled water rate and capacity fee study.
Need a motion in a second.
Some motions?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Gomez, second by Mr. Kennedy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed. Motion carries with Mayor Garcia absent.
Thank you. Now we are at the E one, and I do have cards. I'm going to state for the benefit of those listening and those who want to speak that we grant three minutes for anyone to approach the council and talk about their subject, whatever it might be. We do not respond because they're not on the agenda. We did not agendize these. If you had heard the clerk at the beginning, since it's not agendized, we do not engage in debate or discussion. If it rises to importance of city business, a council member can request that it be put on a future agenda. If it was on the agenda, everyone would have the right to come and speak on the item. And had people known that whatever's in the card was on the agenda, they may be here to discuss it. Since it isn't advertised, they're not here. We don't discuss it, but you still have your three minutes. The first card that I have is Mr. Duncan Hicks. Come up to the microphone, please, and you have three minutes.
I would like to thank the council for giving me the opportunity to make a statement tonight. My name is Duncan Hicks. My legal representation is LP Law Group out of Riverside and Michael DeJordain out of La Brea and Riverside. I have been a member of this community for more than 10 years. I have great respect for local leaders and love this city. However, on January 20 of 2017, I had a shocking experience. When I went to the San Bernardino Sheriff's Department Office to utilize their services, I was told that their services would not be available to me on that day. The deputy sheriff on duty told me to leave the premises and that I would not be provided the service I was requesting. I was upset and confused about what he was saying. As I required further, that deputy told me that if I did not leave the premises, I will be arrested. I was there to conduct normal government business. And when I asked him why I would be arrested, he told me that he would create something. I am still in shock and disbelief about the way I was treated that day. I am even more concerned about the denial of my constitutional rights by a sworn officer of the public agency. The ramifications of this duties officer action run deeply to the civil rights of each and every citizen of this community. I am bringing this issue up tonight as a call to action for our city leaders to exercise great care to protect our rights. We must maintain the integrity of...
Your time is up.
Your time is up. Three minutes is up. Thank you very much for speaking to us. The county is the proper authority. I'm sure you'll be addressing them. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Mr. Delvin Harbor. Harbor? Help. Harbor. Okay. Come forward, please. Sorry, I've mispronounced your name.
Not a problem. Thank you. Thank you for your time, and just want to introduce myself to you, Delvin Harbor. And I'm the president of the board at the California Route 66 Museum, and right here in Victorville. Nonprofit. We operate with volunteers, and I just wanted to encourage you. If you haven't been to the museum, I know some of you have, and I appreciate that. But come inside. It's free. We've been there 21 years, and a lot of neat stuff. We're known worldwide. We have visitors from all over the world come through there. Every day, we're open most of the time. So anyways, a concern I have is we have a, we've had a car show as a fundraiser for 21 years, and I know Mayor Pro Tim Cox, you've entered your car in there?
Yes.
And, but I sent out a letter to our car clubs in the whole high desert and to our friends of the museum stating that we're not going to have a car show this year because it's a fundraiser. We're a nonprofit. We get donations from people that stop in or anybody that wants to donate. Our gift shop sales, that goes to our operating expenses. But we were hit very hard last year, 2016, with fees from the city, more than we'd had in the past. And one that was tacked on was from the fire department, I believe, and it totaled $700, I believe, in fees and permits. And we have our own insurance as a museum and all that, so I'm just concerned about that. We'd love to do the car show, but at this time, it's had a lot of work for our volunteers to put that on. And we're going to take a break this year, sadly. Hopefully, we'll do it next year. And I'd encourage you all to, again, come to the museum, visit us. We're in Old Town Victorville. We're a thriving business, as well as a nonprofit museum. And I think we're a good asset to the Old Town part of Victorville. And I have roots in Old Town Victorville. My parents bought a house there in the 50s, and we kept it as a rental for a long time. So anyways, thank you for your time.
Delvin, thank you. We don't, we're not going to discuss this, but I know...
No, I know.
In the newspaper some time ago, that comment was made. I asked staff to look into that. It's apparently because of a change in the ordinances last July, but some staff member is supposed to get back to you or the representative of Route 66 and go over this item to see if there is a solution.
I would sure appreciate that. Thanks.
Not sure, but they will look at it.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Norm Miller. Pass.
Hello, council members. We have a little problem going on, I believe. We have a new council member. Our new council member apparently don't get together with the city manager so he can find out what things are doing and what to do. And it's beginning to really get to me. I think she needs to either step up to the plate and get together with the council members and find out exactly what to do, or she needs to step down. We need to do, get somebody in here that's going to work for the people. She's not working for the people. She's going down the hill. She's doing all these things, going to San Diego. That's not working for the people of the city of Victorville. And I think she really should step down, and I would love to see it happen very soon or be recalled. Thank you.
You, Dorothy. Maggie Moore? The next speaker?
Good evening, council. I'm going to be looking at you guys, but I'm addressing my comments to Councilmember Gomez. I'm going to read a prepared statement. Councilwoman Gomez, I strongly think you owe your fellow council members and the audience members an apology for your outrageous and disrespectful conduct at the last meeting of this council. You were told numerous times by Mayor Garcia to be silent as the meeting had officially closed. This was offensive to many, I'm sure. It is clear from your choices that either you are incapable of maintaining the long-established decorum of the council, or maybe you don't care, just as long as you chime in and insist upon being heard. I'm very unclear about your agenda for the city, yet I am clear that it doesn't represents, excuse me, doesn't represent what's good for all. Your attempts to throw down the race card most assuredly fell on deaf ears. I can't think of too many things that are more offensive, tacky, and display such poor form. When asking questions in an open public forum and you aren't sure if they should be asked, the rule of thumb when in doubt is don't, especially when they pertain to sensitive and highly emotional topics such as Mr. Duncan Hicks' encounter with the VVPD. Lastly, you have already been advised that in our council meetings, we speak the English language only, and I do mean only. We speak the English language only. To do otherwise is an affront to our country, which we all pledge allegiance to. We do not pledge allegiance to Mexico. Unfortunately, at this juncture, you have put me in the position of demanding your immediate resignation from this council. Otherwise, you may have to face a recall election. Thank you.
Good evening, council. I'm Barbara Powers, and I want to personally thank you, council members, for your attention to Old Town, and to thank all the, so the planning commission that will be at the Unity Hall this next coming Thursday. I think this is amazing. Those residents who know about the pipeline repair in Old Town are very grateful. I've heard many comments. And the committees of Old Town and the ROOT, R-O-O-T, meaning, for those who don't know, Revice, our Old Town. That organization, we are especially thankful. We know the expense paid will make a difference in the future of Old Town, and again, we do want to thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Next speaker, Valentine Godina. If I have that correct? If I didn't get it correct, my apologies, but one down.
Good afternoon, city council. I am a member of ROOT, and I would like to thank the city council for investing in Old Town by replacing the water pipes. I would like to let city council know that I also support ROOT 66 and its car show, which has been a historical event by bringing in tourists to Old Town, but now it seems to be in danger of canceling due to what seems to be outrageous fees. It brings back fears that the cancellation of this event will bring the same unwanted results as when the Christmas parade stopped going through Old Town Victorville. Please consider waiving the fees for ROOT 66 car show and bring back the Christmas parade through Old Town. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Jennifer Neri. I told you... I told you we would get to you.
Hello and good evening, city council. It is my pleasure to be here tonight to represent Route and the, to represent Route and the Route 66 Museum. My name is Jennifer Neri and I want to tell you it's a pleasure to be here tonight and I want to start off by saying thank you for two reasons. The first is for the new pipeline replacement project in Old Town and the second is for your partnership with the county in repurposing the old motels for the homeless. This is a long-awaited blessing for all who have suffered homelessness. We all are anxious to see the project completed as soon as possible. The reason I'm here to speak to you all today is to support the, and advocate for the Route 66 Museum and the annual car show that they bring to the community every year. This historical and monumental event that possibly might not happen this year if the city's fees that are being applied to this event and the museum are not waived or discounted. I'm not sure if the council are aware of the prices of the fees that are being applied or requested to be paid in order for this event to occur. Whatever the total is, it's an amount that is so severely overpriced that the museum is considering not to continue their annual car show this year. It would have been their 22nd year. I was wondering if there was a possibility that the city manager could possibly waive or discount the fees for the museum, who is in such, who is such a huge part of this city and community. We are also limited, who are also limited on funds since they are a nonprofit organization. We all have to join together and advocate on behalf of Route 66 Museum to continue their beautiful display of Americana history that is cherished by everyone who attends. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Robin Vidston. I know, I must have mangled that one. Clarify that pronunciation, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Vidston. Vidston, my last name's Vidston, Robin Vidston.
Thank you.
I am here with the Remembrance Project. Our organization honors and memorializes American citizens who have been killed by those illegally in our country and I'm also with Overpasses for America here in Victorville. We do the patriotic rallies on Bear Valley. Our organization opposes sanctuary cities as many of those killed in our country occurs in sanctuary cities. I'm wearing the shirt right now of a young man that was killed by a man illegally in the country driving drunk and I just happened to meet with his mother today, heartbroken, devastated. So, one of our main issues is opposing sanctuary cities and unfortunately, there's a council member here on this body politic that is having meetings with other council members promoting sanctuary cities. This is not safe for our communities, it is not a good image for the city of Victorville. I personally saw her show up at a sanctuary city meeting at another city hall wearing her Victorville city council badge. This was such an outrage and so wrong on so many levels and in addition, I'm going to use the word, she was a smart aleck. She did not speak like a council member, she was not professional and was offensive to other individuals at that particular event at another city hall down the hill. So, again, our organization opposes sanctuary cities and we call upon Victorville to never go down that path and we're very, very sad that one of your council members has been so involved in promoting sanctuary cities. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Raoul Rodriguez.
Do I get three minutes?
Three minutes.
Thank you. I would like to start by saying I am the California Coordinator for America First Latinos and what we do, we put America and Americans first. We do not agree with illegal immigration. We are against illegal immigration 100%. We need to keep those people out of our country because they are killing innocent Americans. This is one, a Border Patrol agent, Robert Rosas, was murdered 50 feet from the border by his own gun. He was jumped by a number of individuals who beat him up, took his gun and shot him in the face four times. And he's missed, his parents, his wife, his children, of course, they miss him. And talking about illegal immigration, we're talking about the one member of your board who continues to promote illegal immigration. I think it's important that this individual needs to get on board. She took an oath to represent American citizens, not illegals. Therefore, if she can't live up to her oath of office, she needs to resign or there will be a recall by the citizens who do not agree with what she's doing. I happened to get a copy of the procedure for recalling state and local officials from the city of Victorville. We will use this if we have to, to recall that individual. And I think you all know who I'm talking about. I don't even have to mention her name. She needs to get on board, she needs to represent Americans and it's important that she does that as soon as possible because we don't have much time, because we're quite frankly getting tired of what's going on with all these other cities that want to become sanctuary cities. So therefore, we're going from city to city, making sure that the city councils from all these different cities do not want to become sanctuary cities. And I know that your city has already stated you're not going to become a sanctuary city. Rialto has done the same and also Riverside. So we have some victories and we're trying to keep people informed that we need to put a stop to this. I want to thank you again for allowing me to exercise my First Amendment right. I love this country and I'm sure you do too. America first should be our number one goal and not protecting illegal aliens who come to our country and murder illegal Americans. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez. Next speaker is Agnes Giboney or Gibbene, I'm sorry, again, probably need corrected here.
Mayor, city council members, good evening. We have a crisis in this community-
Would you correct me on how to pronounce your last name?
Agnes Gibbene.
Gibbene.
Gibbene, yes.
Thank you, and I didn't mean to interrupt, you still have three minutes, go.
Thank you, I appreciate that. We have a crisis in this country, in the community, a crisis that is made much worse when an elected official disregards the well-being of the community, disregards public safety and disregards current laws. But worse is when an elected official disregards the oath she has taken to uphold the Constitution of the United States. I first met Ms. Gomez in Rialto when she was planning on attending the first Sanctuary City Committee meeting. When we asked what she was there for, she wouldn't answer and walked away. Later she said she didn't even know what sanctuary city was. She went on to post on her Facebook page, "What happened today was cruel and I never would desire this experience to my worst enemies, even if I had them. I was insulted, yelled at and belittled. I didn't even know these protesters and the worst part of it, part of it all was that I may have indirectly invited them to the meeting that I was attending." She hid her Victorville name tag in shame and lied saying she did not know of any meeting. She lied because none of us patriots there in Rialto insulted, yelled or belittled her. But Blanca Gomez insulted me and my dead son. When I showed her a picture of my son Ronald, this is he, I'm wearing his picture on my shirt, who was murdered by a previously deported illegal alien, she laughed in my face. Ms. Blanca, maybe you do, you do have enemies, you acquire them quite easily by your disrespectful and condescending ways. U.S. citizens like me are tired of corruption and like my President Trump said, drain this swamp. Blanca Gomez, you are part of that swamp. You will not corrupt the city of Victorville and thank you for the honor that you guys and respect that you show for the city. Thank you mayor, city council members for keeping the city safe. Blanca Gomez, do the country and the community a favor, resign now. Blanca, why are you attending sanctuary city meetings in Rialto, San Diego, and I don't know what else? What else are you doing that is not legal? Please do everyone a favor and resign. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Loretta Sanchez.
Good evening, my name is Loretta Sanchez. I just want to say what an honor it is to be here and what a professional presentation that you give here in city of Victorville and most importantly, in God we trust. I see America as a blessed country. We are blessed because we have welcomed God into our country and the entertaining of sanctuary cities, to me, is a disgrace to our communities in enabling culture change, which brings crime to the high desert. I just find it very just un-American, unconstitutional. We need to put Americans first. Constituents in this city is who we are to represent, according to your oath. Like I said, it is a disgrace to lawbreakers to come into our communities to kill innocent American citizens and to, like I said, accommodate and enable them. It is unethical, it represents a lack of integrity and professionalism to the people constituents. I would like to see our focus on our veterans, our homelessness and more programs for our youth to help keep our communities safe. Americans want to feel safe. Let us help ourselves before we can help others. Americans, the constituents, want safety, again, in our home, America. We need a solid foundation to represent the ethics, the integrity and the professionalism, not a personal agenda. Blanca, you know what I'm talking about. Thank you, thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you. The next speaker is Robert Cody Stewart.
I'm 22 years old and I went to college for a few months. This is from my philosophy class where we debated about moral and ethics in government. This is about the individual of the state. As entitled to the government, absolutely the dealings of society with the individual and the way of compliance and control, whether the means used be physical force in the form of legal penalties or moral coercion of public opinion. That principle is that the sole end for which mankind are warranted individually or collectively in interfering with the liberty of action of any of their member is self-protection, that the only purpose for which power can be rightfully exercised over any member of a civilized community against his will is to prevent harm to others. The necessity to the mental well-being of mankind on which all their other well-being depends of freedom of opinion and freedom of the expression of opinion on four distinct grounds, which we will now briefly recapitulate. First, if any opinion is compelled to silence, that opinion may for aught we can certainly know be true. To deny this is to assume our own infallibility. Secondly, though the silenced opinion be an error, it may and may commonly does contain a portion of trust and since the general or prevailing opinion on any subject is rarely or never the whole truth, it is only by the collision of adverse opinions that the remainder of the truth has any chance of being supplied. Thirdly, even if the received opinion be not only true, but the whole truth unless it is suffered to be, and is actually is vigorously and earnestly, sorry, my handwriting is very poor back then, this is three years ago, concert, it is, it will by most of those who receive it be held in the manner of the prejudice with little comprehension of feeling or of its rational grounds. And not only is this, but fourthly, the meaning of the doctrine itself would be in danger of being lost or enfeebled and deprived of its vital effect on the character and conduct, the dogma becoming a mere formal profession, ineficacious for good but encumbering the ground and preventing the growth of any real and hostile heartfelt conviction from reason or personal experience. I want to remind you guys, we must fear all, all must fear evil men, but the evil we must fear most is the indifference of good men. On the morning of January 22nd, I was beaten, tasered four times and pepper sprayed by your police officers, the San Bernardino sheriffs, and for three days I sat in jail, urinating blood, urinating blood and vomiting, not being provided with medical treatment, not being provided legal counseling. I was arraigned in custody and now I've been, I've gone to preliminary hearings three times in a row because you guys don't have any evidence. You want to know how this started? This kind dog was in the bar with me and I smelled like marijuana, a tilt-a-kil, and the bar owner there decided to call the cops and say I was selling weed and there's no evidence of it.
Your three minutes are up, thank you Robert. The next speaker is Ruth Musser Lopez.
Hi, so good to see all of your faces, I recognize some of them. My name is Ruth Musser Lopez and I have been a citizen of San Bernardino County since 1953 when I was born here. I love your city, I remember coming here as a girl to the county fair with my father who was farm bureau president for many, many years in the county. I went, I came, I rose here today, I didn't come to speak, but hearing Duncan, Mr. Duncan Hicks and the response, your response, I understand what you're talking about, Mr. Cox, but the county is in charge of the sheriffs, but you are contracting with the sheriff's department, as is Needles where I currently live. I was born and raised in Upland, I live in Needles, I have for, since 1980 when I went there with the Bureau of Land Management, but we need a commission on what's going on. I've been trying to promote this in Needles as well because it isn't just Duncan, I mean, he walked in, he called two days before and they took a report. Two days later, he went in to the department, to the substation and he, they would not take a different report. And I can't hardly believe that it didn't have something to do with the color of his skin because I've seen it over and over again, this disparate treatment in Needles and Barstow. I'm also a reporter for the Sentinel, I see these stories. I, I could go on and on about the same Mr. Robert that was just up here. This is not unusual, this is not just one occurrence, this is happening. We need a commission, I'm begging for a commission all over all the cities that have our contracting with the sheriffs. The other thing I want to say on Route 66, we have, we have Route 66 from Upland all the way out to the river in Needles and I have Route 66 trading post myself that I own and I'm telling you, all are a part of the whole. We, our cities, I wish you would, as our, as council people that go to Sandbag, somehow set up another commission for Route 66 because we've got a problem. Out in Needles, they are destroying, the city council actually is, has planned on demolishing a cabin that was General Patton's cabin when he was operating out of Needles for the- a cabin that was General Patton's cabin when he was operating out of Needles for the training maneuver, just prior to World War II, for the North African campaign. We've had several unique, wonderful buildings along Route 66, burned or destroyed, razed. We have no commission. Our points of interest are the gateway to your points of interest, the points of interest in Barstow, in Victorville, all the way across to San Bernardino and Upland, and to, all the way to LA. So, this is something that, that I would urge you to put on the council at one of your meetings, and I'd like to attend to address it more fully. Thank you.
Thank you. We're not going to respond to the comments, but I want everyone to understand, we take the comments very seriously. They're not on the agenda, so to engage in dialogue or discussion would cut out a lot of people who might normally have been here. After a meeting such as this, I know I'm going to get phone calls saying, well, how do I get on the agenda? Anyone can submit their paperwork to the city clerk. You can hand it to a council person, who will give it to the city clerk or the city manager. If they, they may respond, and it satisfies the individual's complaint or inquiry, but they have the right to ask that it be put on the agenda for the staff to do a report, or the council to ask the staff to do a report, for the council to have a discussion. These, this, this time here is for anyone just to speak on three minutes, and then we sort through those. It looks like, it may look like we're treating it lightly. We are not. We have to be in strict compliance with the law, and we don't want to get in trouble of discussing something that's not on the agenda. We would be reminded by the legal people at the county and the state and everyone else, including the news media, that we engaged in a discussion that was not agendized, therefore it was hidden from the public, and we don't intend to do that ever. So, anyone can appear and speak, and while we don't respond or engage, we do look at those items, we have a discussion with the staff, we've had individuals who left, and then they're contacted by the city manager or his representative for further information, and we've elected to agendize it because of the nature of the comments that were made. So, thank you very much for all of those people who have spoken. We normally allow three minutes. We discourage people coming back. Maggie, you had your three minutes. I hate to turn you down if this really, really, if you feel that it's really, really important, you can come up, but I urge you to think about this, because every person in here then can do the same thing, and it just sets a horrible precedent.
Thank you for your indulgence, Mayor Cox. I'll be brief. Basically, I'm responding to you with, regarding what the previous woman that was up here was speaking about. I have a problem as a citizen with, having formerly been married to a member of the department, having partaken myself in the department. I have a hard time with people who don't understand, well, I don't have a hard time with them, but they don't understand that, that the situation with Mr. Hicks is an ongoing investigation. That is the county's responsibility and not the city's responsibility, contracted or not, to the best of my knowledge. As far as Mr. Hicks goes, I'm not going to comment directly on my feelings or thoughts about that, my feelings, but my thoughts run around along this line. It makes me wonder, based on what I've heard and what I've read, did he follow the proper procedure, which is to file a citizen's complaint? I didn't see any mention of that in the press, so I don't know, but therefore I can only assume that he hot-footed over to the Daily Press with his nice little video and called his attorney to see where he might be able to cash in along the line. Thank you.
I have, Mayor, I, I don't think this is a proper forum for a debate on a matter that's being investigated by the sheriff. I really would ask that we not continue with that debate, infringing on people's constitutional rights. They have the right to appear and speak for three minutes, and, and this has always been an issue with the council. People are going to claim that we violate their constitutional rights if they get cut off. Often, it's, it's nothing we can do about it. Often, it's another agency. At this point in time, on advice of our city attorney, have the right to speak. We set the rules, the rules are three minutes. I now have four additional cards. Are these previous speakers, or these new? Okay. In order of receiving them, Fernando Hernandez.
Thank you. My name's Fernando Hernandez. I wasn't planning to speak, but after I heard the speakers coming up here about, in regards to sanctuary cities, sanctuary cities, did I get that right? I had to Google that up real quick to find out what they were talking about. And it says that the United States and Canada, a sanctuary city is loosely defined as a city that welcomes undocumented refugees, immigrants into the United Kingdom and Ireland. The term also refers to cities that are committed to welcoming refugees, asylum seekers, and others who seek safety. And then it made me remember something else. I'm a Vietnam veteran. I remember Vietnamese people coming to this country here, documented, undocumented, illegally, whatever way. Our country here has always been, and nobody ever brought up the word sanctuary, but our country's always been one with open arms to allow refugees, illegals, legal, whatever it might be. We've always accepted people in this nation. We allowed the Vietnamese to come here, we allowed the Cambodians to come here, we've allowed the people that were embroiled in a war down in El Salvador and Nicaragua. People have always come to this country seeking safety, seeking hope. The idea of sanctuary cities is a, I don't, I can't imagine why you would even bring it up. Our nation is not against helping and allowing people like this to come to this country. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Next speaker is Robert Harriman.
Thank you, guys. Long time no see. I just got a couple of quick things, okay? And they're probably stupid, I guess. Valentine's Day, I saw people selling roses on every corner that has cars. What in the hell do the florists who license themselves to do business in our city? This has got to stop, okay? All right? It goes from snow cones to flowers, you name it. We got to do something about the street vendors. It just, it, it just can't happen. I'm a, I'm a business owner in this town, and I pay for my permits, my insurance, and everything else, and I'm sure the floral, florists around here aren't real happy about that. That's number one. Number two, the Mr. Hicks deal, all right? I'll be brief with that. If I recall, I read in the paper, he's scared to death when he's around a police officer. Well, let me see. When I was a teenager, I got a few tickets speeding, I got mouthy with the cops, they pushed me around, and I was scared to death to drive through town, look for somebody on radar. Oh, my God, I guess I could have been real rich back then, okay? I asked the city and the county, do not put your tail between your legs. I am sick and tired of our tax dollars going to, to avoid litigation, just like the big guy who got tackled on PCP and whatever. I don't want my tax dollars going to this stuff anymore. All right? Please. I know that's a county issue as far as Mr. Hicks is concerned, but I was hoping his lawyers would stick around and listen to me, but they didn't. Anyways, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harriman.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. My name's Tom Piper. I live in San Bernardino County. I'll be for the evening, body cameras on San Bernardino County sheriffs. Three years ago approximately, there was a beating of a suspect in Deep Creek by the San Bernardino County Sheriff's Department. The county supervisors spoke about having body cameras on San Bernardino County sheriffs three years ago. County sheriffs, union, had a vote. They voted they don't want cameras. Why, I don't know. Thought we ought to get the community involved in this situation a little bit, because the cameras are for the community, they're not for the officers, although they will benefit the officers, because most officers are good. It'll just show up the bad ones. There are a couple, apparently. Brought up, I wrote up a little questionnaire, I think you might have a copy of it in front of you, three-question questionnaire to ask your community, whether you have a newspaper, whatever way you communicate to your community. One, do you want officers to wear cameras? Yes or no? Two, do you want your officers to have the ability to turn off the cameras? Yes or no? Three, do you want the community to have some form of access to the video and audio in a timely manner? Yes or no? Thank you.
Thank you. My last card is Anthony Rhodes, last speaker.
Good evening, Council. First, I want to comment on how well the meeting ran tonight. It seems like, you know, I'll bring some accolades to you, Mr. Cox. The meeting seemed to run, run well, and seemed to know that you guys had direction on where to go. Sometimes it seems very discombobulated. The, first, I want to offer my condolences to the family of Mr. Williams. He was the gentleman that died on, in his vehicle on Hughes Road over the storm this last weekend. I've been through that area on Hughes Road, and it seems to get very flooded even during light rains, even though the gentleman probably shouldn't have been crossing during that time. I know the residents around there know that it gets very deep. I seen that the last rain we had were, me personally, I drove through it, it was maybe only a foot, foot and a half, although I wasn't familiar with the area. I could hear the water being picked up by the air intake in my vehicle, and subsequently, after I had drove through the puddle, my car stalled, so I had to restart it. With the issue with Duncan Hicks, although I think, I think it's important that we look at that as a city issue, not necessarily county, because although we contract, I agree with the statement the woman made earlier, that maybe we should explore the option of creating a commission to be able to oversee those types of incidences, because we do have, we do have influence on what happens next, just like we're doing with the fire. If we don't like the fire, then we can open it up. We should be doing the same for the police. I think Mr. Hicks could have taken an apology and went on his way, but although I do agree with the statement that if someone takes away my time, it's the only thing I have in this world, and so if you threaten my freedom by creating charges, then that's taking away my time from my family, my friends, and all the other curricular activities or extracurricular activities that I participate in, which is essentially threatening my freedom. I think the officer should, you know, obviously, we should have an investigation, and the officer should face any consequences that are, that are applicable to the, to the outcome of that investigation. Some of the comments, it's funny how some of the people say that how well the meeting has ran, but yet we get a lot of interaction from, from back here, right? So, I see that the same people that are complaining about a certain individual on the council or how other council are conflicting, they are also participating in the unorganization or appearance of an organization, unorganized meeting. Thank you.
Three minutes.
Thank you. Which takes us, Mr. Rhodes is, thank you, his last speaker. Next item on the agenda, report from the city manager, E2.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem, and members of the council. A couple of speakers mentioned it. I'll give a few details. We do have the second of three planned public workshops with the Planning Commission in Old Town at the Unity Hall. Most of us know that as the old Bank of America building. You can even, the sign is still there, and if you can see through the paint a little bit, you can still see the B of A logo there. It's kind of interesting. That is this Thursday, February 23rd at 5:00 PM, and when we last met there, kind of goals and visioning was discussed. This time, we will be discussing with anyone who's interested, but particularly residents and businesses in that area, the potential for land use and development standards for Old Town, such topics as development density, site standards, building standards, those sorts of things will be discussed by the Planning Commission, and we welcome public input into that. Coming up April 3rd is our next community cleanup day. The reason I'm mentioning it now is we are accepting participation volunteers. There's a very short application to fill out. If you have a group and want to come as a group, we will give you a corner of the city that, that needs some help. If you're an individual, just come on into City Hall, and we will pair you up with a group that, that maybe needs a little bit more help. Sometimes we even send out volunteers with our city team, who goes out to one area of the city and helps clean that up. So, that cleanup is on April 8th, but we are accepting any applications now. On March 4th, Saturday, March 4th, will be the first neighborhood cleanup slash free dump day of 2017. The neighborhood cleanup will be in the location of the old Walmart building on Bear Valley Road and Balsam from 8:00 AM until noon. This event is open to city of Victorville residents with proof of residency. And, let's see here, Saturday, March 18th will be a busy day in Victorville. Our Environmental Programs Division will host the first clean sweep of 2017. This location is at the Recycling Drop-Off Center at 15164 Anacapa Road in Victorville. You can find out more information about that on our website. And then also, on Saturday, March 18th, is a Run in the Park. We have these every other month. This time, it is at Eagle Ranch Park. Check-in starts at 7:30, the run starts at 8:01 AM. The theme is a Shamrock Run, so it's the day after St. Patrick's Day, and anyone who shows up dressed in the theme will have their $5 fee waived. So, that is all that I have for this evening, Mr. Mayor Protem.
Thank you. From the council, starting on my right, Gready.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Cox. First of all, I would like to wish Mayor Garcia speedy recovery for not being here today for being ill. I'd like to thank city staff, especially the Economic Development Department, for a very well-done session we had on the Grant Review Committee with Mayor Garcia and myself, where we were able to divide up funding for many worthy organizations, including the homeless shelter and others. I thought that was a job well-done, and it's something that's very positive. I'd also like to thank our public safety folks. We have a lot of great leaders out here in the desert. Most people may not know that, because when something goes wrong, that's the story. But all the hard work that people do in our fire department and police department, it, it really gets overlooked a lot, or at least I don't think people realize how important they are in these times, because, you know, when you have the freeway blocked, or the freeway 15 Ka Home Pass collapsing, fires, it seems like we're never able to relax. There's always something going on in different parts of the year, so I'm really proud of the folks that we have up here. And lastly, well, I would like to say for all the folks that drove up here today to give their comments, we are not, we don't get to pick and choose up here what laws we follow, and I got to tell you, I have eight long years of biting my tongue. We have a state government that seems at odds with the very rules that we have on the books, but I hope that everyone knows that when it comes to Victorville, this is a city that is based on laws. a city that is based on laws. And, you know, there's a lot of things said, and I hope that people appreciate our action, because we cannot address each issue that comes up in the way that we would like, but I am available. Councilmember Eric Negrete at the city, you can call in, email anytime. We are here to serve the residents of the city, and there's a lot of trade-offs for living up here. And so, for those people that are here, we want to make sure that they know they have confidence in us, and that's why we're here, to serve. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kennedy.
Just a couple of things. I am Ryan McKeekman's replacement on what used to be known as Sandbag, San Bernardino Association of Governments. It changed their name, it's now, it has two different functions in this organization. One is the San Bernardino County Transportation Authority, that works on transportation issues all over the county, including many in our region, and the Council of Governments, which is more focused on governmental things. The one project underway with the County Transportation Authority right now is the widening of 395 between Palmdale Road and Chamberlain in Adelanto. They are in the right-of-way phase right now, so they're trying to obtain the right-of-ways they need to do the expansion, the widening. They'll end up with two lanes in both directions. That's a project all of us have looked forward to. The second thing is just an issue I'd like to pose to staff. My good friend, Mayor Protem, has been concerned for some time about an issue that I felt, frankly, he was kind of overly focused on, and it was called the Street Lighting Fund. And I thought, well, you know, in the scheme of things, it's not that big a deal, until I was looking through our annual financial statement this year, getting ready for the Audit Committee meeting, and took a look at the Street Lighting Fund. Now, this is a, this is a fund where, two years ago, we did a study, this fund was in a desperate condition, $500,000 shortfall, it wasn't going to have enough money to keep our lights working. We went to a 218, we did a study, and then a 218 vote, and as a result of that, we now have one big street lighting district citywide, and everybody's paying $17 a year. Doesn't seem like a lot, but I was looking at the Street Lighting Fund, Doug, and I noticed this year that we took in $2 million of revenues, and 1.5 million in expenses. That's a lot more, I think, than we had before, so we had about a, almost a $500,000 surplus in the Street Lighting Fund this year. And I thought, well, at first, I thought, that's great, that'll get us to a break even, but no. Actually, we've started the year with $1,005,000 in that fund, and now it's up to $2 million. And a couple of years ago, it was in desperate condition, and I'm wondering if maybe we have set that assessment a little bit too high. So, I'd like staff to come back to, talk to us about that fund, and just where we are, where it's going, why we're accumulating a balance there, and if there's any appropriate action for us to take at this time. That's all I've got.
Question, Mr. Kennedy. Do you want to do this as a part of our upcoming budget studies, or do you want it separate?
No, I don't. Budget study's fine.
Okay. Ms. Gomez, Councilmember Gomez.
Talvin, Jennifer, and Valentin, the excessive fees, it's something that we will be looking into, just like Mr. Cox had said earlier. I also kind of whispered into the ear of the city manager, and he also confirmed the same.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is going to conclude the council meeting tonight. Thank you so much for taking time to come to the council meeting and participating. This only works when you're a part of it. Hold us accountable, remind us of the things we need to be reminded, and we enjoy your support when you support us, and we also take into consideration when you have complaints. Thank you very much for coming out. I wish you all a good night.